This conference will now be recorded.
Hi, Don Hall.
Hello.
Is my own state, did he was following you?
What's that?
Of the state police?
No, I don't think so.
Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, March 16th, 2022 meeting of the Monterey Select Board here in downtown Monterey. I am Steven Rice, the chair, present at Town Hall. Justin Maycliff is present. And Mr. Wondell is not present. So. I would, so the first item on the agenda was to discuss interim to an executive session to continue and review and consider approval of the following set of executive session minutes, the 10, 4, 3, 2, 3, 16, 22, and possible amendments to 2, 22, and 11, 17, 21. Quite frankly, I hope as far as the, I know you've mentioned something about 2, 22, but, you know, actually take a look at it because, and I'm not really, well, I guess I'm not really discussing it because not an executive session. So my recommendation is to go through the rest of these items and see where we're at. Is that okay? Yeah, I mean, I think we've discussed it. Whether or not we want to. Okay, good. So then let's jump into the rest of these items. Town administrator Adams, public records, community request with town council follow up.
So as requested, I reached out multiple times to the Public Records Division, and they will not respond. So I'm taking that as a they do not assist the way you thought they might. Because they're very responsive to any other request. So I would reopen my request to be able to contact town council for all the reasons I mentioned last week.
So I thought when we left it, we thought it was generally okay as long as, as long as the requests were made in writing and that, and that the answers were copied off to all the board members.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Okay, so can we, can we do that? Would you be willing? So, so I would make a motion that we allow Melissa to.
Well, I'm looking for like a training tutorial as well. So I'm not going to be able to put that in writing. I'd like to have like a, a remote meeting with them because I'm assuming they're not going to come out here to discuss some concerns I have, questions I have, just, you know, generic questions.
So can you just, in one of those things, you could just ask them the question, would you be willing to provide a remote training for public records? And how would that, how would, how would that work? Would you come here? Would I go there? Could it be more than one individual thing at this remote meeting? So therefore it could be either select board members or it could be other public records officers? If we do have them in town?
Yeah.
That, that sounds, that sounds okay.
That sounds good.
And then make sure that all of his responses are also in writing so that we have everything in writing. New business town administrator items, none. So. So. So the, so I reached out to town council as per the select board instructions to find out how we may use ARPA funds. And it was done quite a while ago. The, the town council did respond and gave us some very good information, which I, which I believe the entire board received.
Yes.
Yes. Essentially, there are a lot, there are a number of items that can be used, that ARPA funds can be used for. Monterey's got 275,000, I believe, of their, their vast funds that we have until 2024 to use them. So there's no rush. However, with an eye toward the budget, there are some more items used per council that may be paid for through the use of ARPA funds.
Do you want me to go through the ones I recommended?
Sure.
So I'm recommending that you remove the following special articles, the cameras outside of town hall, the fire department replacement hose, the electronic voting, any additional monies that may be needed for the community center lighting, and the milfoil. Because those are all items that council has said could be paid for with ARPA funds.
Okay. So I read what council wrote, and it certainly seems like these could, these are items that could be covered with ARPA funding. My initial sense, however, is that it's not really the, the appropriate expenditure for ARPA monies in my, in my point of view. It seemed like the blanket revenue loss, which he said it sounded like up to 10 million in the community, if I'm not mistaken. The items, especially like the electronic voting and the lighting and cameras, but that's not really what I, I understand it stood, you know, ARPA funds. The point of ARPA funds, in my view, was tackling larger, larger projects, like one-time projects that are a response to, to COVID, like maybe an ambulance, right? If the, if the ambulance service is dealing directly with COVID. Things like electronic voting, for instance, if it, if it does get approved at town meeting, would become an operating expense. And it just doesn't make sense to me to cover kind of what seems to be an operating expense with ARPA money, even if we're legally allowed to do it.
The way I look at ARPA funds are that ARPA funds are provided to towns to meet additional challenges that the towns have during COVID. So when I, when I think of, when I think of the challenges that Monterey has faced during the last two years, certainly anything that would benefit a town meeting would be, would be beneficial. And so therefore I, I had no problem with the electronic voting. Certainly, the, the fact that, that people are spending less time, more time in town and less time out to other events, and therefore lighting for community spaces such as the community center made, made sense to me. The, the remediation of, of milfoil was sort of an interesting thing because, again, we had twice the amount of people. We had approximately twice the amount of population that, that spent full time in Monterey during the last two COVID years. Therefore, I, at least I know for the transfer station and probably for the beach, although we never did a study on the beach, there, there, there were going to be, there were a lot more people, a lot more bodies in that lake, a lot more activity in that lake. And so, which, which may have, which may well have exasperated any kind of growth in, in milfoils, since it actually, it's activity that moves it around. So, so in that light, I see that, that, that ARPA monies could be used. And, and they're stated to be used for, for remediation for environmental challenges. But I think a lot of it was, you know, I, you know, I think that a lot of it may be kicked up by the, all the extra activities. And Monterey has really had an onslaught of, of activity during the last two years. It used to be very cyclical. People came in, people came out, but people's been spending a lot of time up here. I only wish, you know, I think our roads got more, got more use as well. And, you know, if I could extrapolate that further, I mean, I mean, I think that that was an extra challenge. So, so that's, so, so that's why I'm fairly clear-headed when I think about using some of the funds that are available to kind of offset some of the challenges that the town, that the town has. And in this particular budget year, when things are, are, are very, are very tight and very challenging, I, I can't think of a better use of funds that were, that were set aside to kind of give these towns a little bit of a breather for the, for the things that they've experienced in the last two years.
So I guess I'll just go back to what, what town council wrote in response to. This is at least for the fire truck hose, the security cameras, the milfoil, and the electronic voting. It doesn't explicitly mention the community center lighting, but this is explicitly in response to an Alka Pavilion Community Center. He wrote, "These six items could all, in my view, be covered as government services funded with ARPA money designated to replace lost revenue, but otherwise do not fall within one of the enumerated eligible uses of ARPA funds." "One of the eligible uses of ARPA funds is to replace lost revenue resulting from the pandemic." "Originally, under the interim final rule, recipients had to conduct a complex calculation to determine what one's estimated lost revenue was. Under the final rule, however, recipients may take the so-called standard allowance and designate up to 10 million as lost revenue. Given the amount of ARPA funding received, the town could designate all of its ARPA money for this purpose. ARPA funds used for this purpose may be spent on any government service and is subject to a streamlined reporting process." So it seems, when I read that, it seems to me that the basis for justifying spending ARPA money on these items would be lost revenue, which is, which the state automatically seems to assume at, at 10 million, which I don't think is really fair to the lost revenue in Monterey because most of our revenue, to my understanding, is from property taxes and not really commercial, commercial taxes. Like if we had businesses and we're taxing businesses and they need to shut down for COVID.
This is like a standard exemption, though. They're doing it because the formula to figure out lost revenue was so complicated and so many towns complained that towns like us now get to use this exemption for lost revenue, anything under 10 million.
And the other thing is this, so when you talk about lost revenue, one way of judging it is we're, we're losing money that's coming in. But the other way of judging it is if, if government services have to do twice, let's say, twice the duty to service, to service the, the same population during COVID, then that in effect is lost revenue. Because even though we're only bringing the same amount of taxes in, but we're actually spending more time and more effort servicing a, a population that's hunkering down in Monterey. If we look, a good example is the transfer station. While we, we had the same amount of money going into the transfer station, these guys were handling almost twice the amount of rubbish. So if we think about, so, so that, even though it's, the same amount of money is going into the transfer station, in effect, it's, it's lost revenue because they're, we're getting, we're getting half their services essentially than we normally, than we normally have. And so, and so I'm well aware that it applies under the exemption granted by the state. And also that, you know, that would be a way to interpret the lost revenue, although I don't really agree with it. But these expenses in particular, milfoil, we've been spending $30,000 on long, you know, before COVID started. And, and none of these, to me, really seem to be, I, look, I think it would be legal, according to what council wrote, because of the designating up to 10 million in lost revenue, which is the quote "standard allowance." But I don't really want to, I don't really want to use the exemption in how we spend the COVID monies. I think that there's more. There's uses that we have that much more are related to the, not an exemption, but what, what ARPA money is really getting at. Like people are in their homes using broadband to zoom onto things rather than going to them in person, or they're looking for outdoor spaces instead of indoor spaces. So what I, I just, I don't, these would not be how I would spend.
Can I make a suggestion? Let's have a discussion about, about these. Committee and let's hear what they say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would.
Continue the conversation.
I would definitely. Ultimately, ARPA monies are spent by, you know, the select board, or it's the authority of the select board to spend them. But we're working on the budget with the finance committee.
Right. So let's, let's have a discussion with them.
Okay, but at least, at least we wanted to actually bring it out to the public that we are, that we are discussing it and, and that these funds are available. Special article for milfoil control in Lake Garfield. So the Lake Garfield Working Group met last night and made this, they made a motion, which was the Lake Garfield Working Group recommends select board consider putting, no, that's sorry, that's regarding to the Lake Tax District. The second motion the Lake Garfield Working Group made last night was the Lake Garfield Working Group supports the ultimate development of creating a Lake Tax District. However, Lake Garfield Working Group wants to be clear that we still recommend that the select board approve $50,000 for fiscal year 22, 23 for Lake Garfield weed mitigation. Lake Garfield Working Group needs to be clear that supporting, that support of considering the creation of a Lake Tax District is wholly separate from the $50,000 in funds needed for this upcoming fiscal year. I know, you know, the finance committee voted unanimously to not put the $30,000 for Lake Garfield weed mitigation on the, on the warrant. And I, what I would like to do is ask the finance committee to reconsider that, I guess, at the meeting on Friday. Because frankly, they made that decision before this year's request had even been increased to $50,000, which doesn't make it seem like they'd be any more likely to agree to the expense.
What, what, okay, what do you, how do you feel about this?
How I feel about this is everything that I've read from the state is that the finance committee is the final authority on the.
Now, I'm not, I'm not asking you, I'm asking, what do you, what do you think about, about the amount of money being put on there for milfoil control?
I think, you know, the Lake Garfield Working Group is a group that was appointed by the select board to advise the select board. But I think in this case, the final decision is really with the finance committee. And so it's almost like the Lake Garfield Working Group or the select board should petition the finance committee to understand what's going on with the lake and what needs to be done to, to maintain the lake.
So take a, take a quick D because you've officially become a politician. You're not answering my question.
Yeah. No, I mean, I have my, I have my views. I think, I think that the, that some amount of money should be spent to, to mitigate milfoil, which seems to be, you know, expanding in the lake. And I know it goes in cycles. There's new technologies that are, that are not herbicides that are available, like banquet barriers and like, you know, mechanical harvesting on the surface before the diver assisted suction harvesting. And personally, you know, I would like to see those used to, to maintain, maintain Lake Garfield. But. But if, but I, you know, all I can do is ask the finance committee to do that.
All right. So, well, no, you're allowed to express your opinion. Believe me, the people are going to ask you and, and people ask me. And I, my opinion is I do believe that $30,000 is warranted. I'm, I'm less enthusiastic about $50,000 alone because of the amount and also because of the technologies that are, haven't been tried in, in Monterey. However, personally, I'd be willing to spend the additional funds to see if, if there can be a result, especially since the majority of Moneradians not want to use herbicides. So it's been my experience with the finance committee that they're pretty, you know, that they've always taken this position. But I don't think they've ever approved milfoil, the money for milfoil. And it's, it's, it's not that somebody's right or wrong. It's that everybody's got a different perspective, just like we were talking about the Arbusoff. You've got a little different perspective when it comes to milfoil. Because again, it's something where you're never going to spend enough to eradicate it. So it's really something that you've got to, you know, it's, it's, it's whether you get a $5 haircut or a $30 haircut. Your hair's going to grow the same. So. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with the $30,000. I, I'd be interested what the townspeople think about $50,000. Now, by the way, something to keep, to keep in mind is also since milfoil, I do believe that the activity in Lake Garfield directly, directly impacts the amount of milfoil that's spread around. And therefore, you know, maybe the ARPA money could be for the difference between the $30,000 and the $50,000. Maybe it could be $20,000 to, you know, or something like that. But, but we can ask the finance committee again, but I, I would be very surprised if they, if they, if they change their, they change their position. So just prepare for disappointment. But at some point, we're, the select board is going to have to decide what to put on our line of, of the, of the, of the warrant. And even if it says select board agrees with this and the finance committee does not agree with it, we're going to have to come up with something. So that's why I'm asking your opinion. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. But we'd have to formulate a, a motion. So. Think about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to see the, the lake maintained with the diver assisted suction harvesting and the other technologies. But to the extent that the finance committee doesn't want to be part of the budget, I will defer, defer to them in that, in that way. I think what's, what I found unfortunate is that there wasn't, you know, a proposal put forward to the finance committee and considered and then rejected. It was just kind of, in my view, kind of offhanded rejection of the issue. But like you said, they rejected it kind of every year.
Yeah, Melissa, right. Have they, I think they've rejected it every single year.
I'd have to go back on that, but I'm pretty sure it usually says the finance committee does not support this article.
Yeah.
And I mean, also, and, you know, someone, I think John Silver had mentioned, it often says the select board does not.
There were some years, yeah, there were some years that the select board voted not to, not to put it on, and it was put on, it was, it was his petition that actually put it, put it back on the budget. So that's always a possibility as well. There's a, oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, Ron Rothschild, how are you?
Good.
So if the select board and the finance committee constantly does not recommend funding for the milfoil mitigation, and it comes before as a citizen petition, and to the best of my knowledge, passes every year almost unanimously, what is the finance, well, you may not be able to answer for the finance committee, what is the select board problem with just putting it as a line item on the budget?
So I, I personally tried to do that on, on a few different years and finally just gave up.
I remember.
Okay. It's a different, look, everybody has a different philosophy when it comes to the lake, right? Some people think, oh, the lake is only beneficial to the people that use the lake and the people that live on the lake. Some people believe that the lake is like our roads or our bridges. It is a part of Monterey. And where I'm willing to spend money on a road that I never go down to rebuild it, Bear Town, Bearview, thereabouts, sorry. But, but I believe to pay for it because it is part of Monterey. But some, but some people take the, take the idea, well, I never use the lake. I don't live on the lake. All the rich people live on the lake. I'm sure that's not the case. So therefore, why do I have to pay for anything that has to do with the lake? So it's different in philosophy. Or why do not, or why do I, or why do the townspeople who don't, some people who don't, you know, don't have anything to do with the lake? Why do they have to pay for milfoil? The other, the other aspect of it is the fact that milfoil, again, is, is not, is, is, you're never going to win the war on mil, on milfoil. It's something that just keeps on happening. All, you know, however, the idea is you're, you need to constantly battle, battle it back every year.
It's no different than road maintenance or snow plowing. I mean, it's, you know.
But some people would say, and now I'm going to play devil's advocate here, some people would say, well, no, because I, I don't have anything to do with the lake. I don't use the lake. I don't live on the lake. To be, the lake people should take care of it. Why should the whole town have to pay for, for, for milfoil control?
Well, why should the whole town have to pay to maintain Bear Town Mountain Road? Sorry, Don.
I'm feeling, yeah. So feel free to come to the next joint meeting of the finance committee and the select board, or, or go to a finance committee meeting. And I think if people stated that to the finance committee, maybe they'd have a, maybe they'd have a, see it in a different light. But that's generally been the, the argument, that, you know, it's, yes, it is expensive. It's an expensive thing, although people don't realize that if we use herbicides, they're not cheap either. So it's still $10,000 to use herbicides. And if you just use that mechanical harvester like they use in Lake Deal.
That I may spot.
That actually is more expensive that, to run that mechanical harvester. So, so this is sort of actually a middle ground between a mechanical harvester, which makes things worse, and herbicide, which the town doesn't seem to want. So that's, but that is the challenge with finance. And, and remember, their job is to, is to look for things that we maybe shouldn't be spending on. So.
I appreciate that, but I mean, $30,000 or $50,000, what, what percent of our total budget are we talking about here? I mean, it sounds like a lot of money out of pocket, but.
Oh, one, one percent.
I can't do math.
Not a five million, yeah, 5,000, 50,000, that's like one percent.
No, it counts.
Oh, yeah, that was my quick, that was my quick.
Especially not at 6 o'clock at night.
Right.
I mean, it's not, it's not a significant expense. You're, you're preaching to the choir, you know? Or at least it's part of the choir. It is, it's always been, it's been, it's been a challenge to sort of have that conversation. And that's one of the reasons why it always seems to pass. But, you know, again, finance, the people on the finance committee don't feel that it's, that it's.
Is it fair to say that the people on the select board are, would approve adding to, adding a line item so that we don't have to bring it up to the citizens petition? Can I, can I get a commitment from you on that?
So I would say substantively, I support, you know, using resources and funds in this case to cut down on milfoil control. Procedurally, I think the finance committee really holds the purse strings.
Agreed.
And so that's where, that's where I, I think, you know, what I would do is either convince the finance committee that it's a worthwhile expenditure or have a citizen petition. Because I don't, I don't, at this point, feel comfortable having select board put things on town meeting warrants when the finance committee unanimously votes to not have them on the warrant.
Okay, I understand there's some competition there. But I guess my, my question is very particular. Would you support the concept of creating it as a line item on our budget so that we don't have to go through the citizens petition every year?
I don't fully understand what is a special article or what is a line item. But it's my understanding that this is more of a special article.
No, so it can be a line, no, it can be a line item, just like we have a salt and sand line. Okay, right? And we know we're only going to be using them, only using that during the winter on the roads. We can have a, a milfoil remediation line in the budget, which has been proposed at one point. And the idea is you, you know, even if you only put a dollar in it, it's a line item. And then the people in the, at town, at town meeting can actually decide how much they want to fund it. Or you put it into $30,000, since it was $30,000 every single year with the exception of this year, which was, I think, that the recommendation that I made while that. However, again, as soon as I mentioned about putting it as a, as a budget item.
Well, I don't, I don't have a good understanding, frankly, of what needs to be a special article and what can be a line item.
So here usually the line item. So here usually the line items are regular recurring expenses, you know, like salaries, wages, benefits, you know, road maintenance, this and that. When you have a special circumstance that comes up, a one-time capital purchase or something like that, that's when it's a special article. And the arguments in the past with the milfoil have always been with regard to the tax district, that this is something that should be handled like Lake Buell and the lake maintenance should be handled through a tax district. And that's why they've never, the finance committee and past select boards have not agreed to put it as a regular recurring item.
But I'm also aware, like, for example, cultural council, right, had to be taken off as a line item and put on as a special article?
That had to do with the cultural council laws, which that was a special circumstance.
I'll give you a good example. If for some reason we do electronic voting and it's $5,000, this one's a warrant item. However, if every year we're going to do electronic voting and it becomes, it goes onto the budget and it becomes $5,000 every year. Same thing with CART. The first time we used CART, it was a special article. But then all the, but then all the subsequent years, we had it as a regular line item. This is actually one of the, one of the only ones that I know that we do the same thing every year. It just goes, becomes a special, you know, if anything, should become a budget item, it should be, it should be this. If you spend the same amount every single year, but because it's so controversial, if we have the same, we have the same discussions every year.
But like snow or like potholes, milfoil is just going to be a recurring thing that has to be continually managed here on and forever.
I have a comment. My name's Maureen Regan and I've lived in Monterey for 54 years. So yes, I was this big one when my dad built our little shoebox house. We own lakefront. There was no houses around behind us anywhere. Stuff changes, progress happens and that's all fine. I just wanted to say that the creation of a tax district can, you know, prove to be a tax burden that a lot of people might, a lot of people would find objectionable. I could, and I've talked to people about also getting a petition going, saying that, you know, it's not the right way to handle it. I know Lake Buell does it, but that doesn't mean Monterey has to, you know. Kids can say their friends jumped off the bridge, so, you know, they should be able to too. Well, that just doesn't hold. I resent having an extra tax burden for letting the school camps that use the lake, the kayak clubs, the swim club from Canyon Ranch, fishermen from Connecticut, New Jersey, New York, wherever. But, you know, these people come every year. It's gotten really, really pretty much packed. And I never had a problem with it, you know. I don't use the lake that much because I've got some disabilities that, you know, preclude me from doing that. But every weekend on Mondays and Tuesdays, all the cut up seaweed and stuff is really nasty on the shoreline. It's just, it goes out 12, 15 feet. It's just a really big mess and it's hard for me. But I go out and I drag it into shore every stinking Monday and Tuesday. And my neighbor is kind enough to let me, you know, bring it to his garden, you know, behind me. But come Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we're back to the same old mess. So I feel like I am helping to maintain the lake. A tax district is just not a fair thing. Nobody is denied access to the lake. Nobody, nobody. And I just, it's not, it's not the fair thing to do to ask me. And a lot of other people that, you know, this discussion has come up and I will collect signatures if it would make a difference. I'm just like really frustrated right now and a little bit scared. So, you know, we just have to come up with a common solution. Do you understand my point of view?
I totally do. We're really, so even though milfoil and tax districts sound like they go together, at least in my mind, I, they're separate, they're separate items. So I, I think everybody, I think we hear you.
Yeah.
And I think, I think you're.
But Steve, are they separate items? I'm sorry to interrupt.
They are separate items.
Okay.
Because, because milfoils, because milfoils is a remediation, at least in my, on my understanding of it, milfoils are remediation of a town, of a town entity. Just like, again, plowing, fixing roads, that's milfoil. The discussion of a tax district, of the 800 dwellings in Monterey, I believe there's 180 dwellings that are in the particular tax, tax district. That's a, that's a, that's a discussion about a minority area that will only impact those particular homes. So when I look at milfoil, I look at a global thing. It's a Monterey problem. When I'm talking about the discussion of the tax district, again, this is my understanding of it. This is a specific, this is a specific group. And the idea that, you know, anyway, so, 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 you know, I know, I know a lot of people have been kind of putting it together, well, you have a tax district, you can, you can take care of the milfoil and whatever. Who knows? Who knows what, what, you know, if there's not a direct result, my, my job, this work, I believe the board's job is right now, is we're, we're talking about something that we can do right now, right today. And that is the fund for milfoil control. As far as the tax district, that is, that is entirely separate discussion. It has multiple parameters that may include milfoil, but are not, it's not the substantive part of the discussion.
Having spoken to a couple of the members on the working committee, it's my understanding that the reason they recommended the tax district was because they just gave up on trying to get funding from the town for milfoil mitigation.
Well, I stand up in front of town meeting every, every year, for the last six years, with a citizen petition in my hand, of getting people to fund for milfoil. So, you know, there are people and people vote for it. So.
It happens.
You know, it happens. I have no idea what would happen to the district ever be created. But I don't, but, but again, we have to focus on what's on right now. The thing about milfoil is if you, you can't just give up a year, you know? It doesn't go away. It doesn't, it doesn't decide to go, it's my understanding, it doesn't go away. It actually grows more. So if you, if you, if one year you're saying, eh, you know what, I'm not going to fund it this year. Again, these are just my opinions, not opinions of the board. So it's the reason why I'm willing to go to get to stand up at town meeting and say it. It's the reason why I would love to have it on as a budget item and then let the people of the taxpayer in Monterey have a discussion about it. But there seems to be some very, there seems to be some folks that are just adamant that they want to turn it into some kind of global, global thing, you know? Again, we're talking about the, we can talk about the price of gasoline, but, and that's a lot different than having a discussion about, you know, geopolitics, even though they are related, my focus is on what's, what's, what's in front of me in my home. So, so it's the same thing with Monterey.
So to speak to the question of whether or not they're related, I mean, I think they are fundamentally related because the money that would be raised in a tax district wouldn't be for a lifeguard or mowing the lawn at the town beach. Because frankly, that's in the, that's in the town budget and no one's asking that that be taken out of the town budget. There's, there's $24,135 for lifeguard payroll and ministry fees. And there's $6,500 for parks, lawn maintenance, spring and fall cleanup, which is, most of which is not at the lake, but some of it, I believe, is that beach area. They are related. The money in a proposed tax, tax district would really go towards weed control in my understanding. What the Lake Garfield Working Group wrote in their motion from yesterday's meeting was the Lake Garfield Working Group recommends select board consider putting the formation creation of a lake tax district on the town warrant for purposes of a long-term sustainable funding source to maintain Lake Buell. And to me, that's what the tax district is all about.
Did they tell you how long did they expect it to take to formulate it?
Oh, yeah, I'm aware that it would take some time. But I, but I think the point for me is not saying only people on the lake should be paying for weeds because everyone has access to the lake. But the point for me is every year that it gets put on the budget as a special article and it's at town meeting. And like you said, it's been voted yes every time and people are favorable to it at the moment when it's been $30,000. What if it's $50,000? What if it's, what if it's more? And I think of tax district more as a long-term sustainable solution, more so than saying only people who live on the lake should be taxed.
Okay, so we can both agree that even if everybody was in favor of a tax district, that you cannot have a tax district by May?
No, no, I mean, the current year's, the current year's problem should be dealt with. But it's more of a long-term look at things as what is sustainably going to unreserve Lake Buell.
Right now, I think we should really, right now, I believe we should be focused on this year's budget and other discussions.
Actually, probably three questions. Who pays for the maintenance of the beach? Cleanup of the goose poop and the dumping of sand, the cost of the sand and the dumping and the raking out of the sand and, you know, the lifeguards and all that. Is that a town expense?
The town pays for it. We have a parks, we have our parks.
I'm just looking at the, at the lake right now, okay? So the town doesn't mind paying for that. Who bought all those kayak racks? Very expensive. I looked them up. They're like $900 plus dollars each. Who pays for them?
Town paid for that.
The town pays for them. So that people can use them on the lake that they don't want to help fund to clean. I, I just don't get the logic. I don't. And if somebody could explain it, that would be great, but it's just, it's not right and it's not fair. I'm talking about maybe my taxes would go up $7. Maybe they go up 700. I have no idea, but the, it's just not a fair thing.
So, and I think your point is well taken that people from all over town and out of town benefit from Lake Garfield. I think there's also a point to be made that people who live on the lake more so, or on a more regular basis, benefit from Lake Garfield in general. And there's exceptions. And there's no perfect way to tax. There's no perfect way to tax. But there are better ways and there are ways that might more sustainably protect the lake. But no, I agree. There's no perfect way, you know, we can't charge a toll every time you go on the lake, you drop 25 cents in the jar. We're not going to, you can't reasonably do that. So you have, you have a point there.
There's a whole lot of traffic out there, especially lately, but even before lately.
Okay, well, we'll have this, we'll have this discussion. Then we have to, we have to.
We have to move on, I understand, but I would just, in support of Maureen, I would like to point out that I did a little research. And although this is from an old census, I couldn't find newer census information, an old census seemed to indicate that a percentage, 52% of the homes in the town of Monterey are seasonal homes owned by second homeowners.
And that number's low.
It's an old census.
Yeah.
And I think it would be also fair to then say that the majority of those seasonal homes are around or are within the lake district.
I don't know about that.
And those homes that are within the lake district are probably valued significantly higher because of their lake frontage and proximity to the lake. So based on that, someone verbally told me that some huge percentage, something like 70% of the town revenue is generated by our town's second homeowners. Now, how many of those are in the lake district? I don't know the size of the lake district or what it's proposed to be, but based on that, it seems only logical that the people living on the lakefront are already paying their fair share of the lake maintenance. And 1% of the budget from the town, based on the supposed 70% that they're contributing, shouldn't be a big ask. We wouldn't need a lake district if we could get it as a recurring line item.
So, yeah, I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Set my.
So, all right, so we're, so we're going to, we're going to continue with the rest of this evening's frivolities. Select, two seats, select board expenses.
So I may have been using faulty numbers when I came to the conclusion that we could reduce select board expenses. I'll have to investigate that further.
You mean in the budget?
Yeah.
Where, what number are you talking about?
It is on the first forty weeks. Select board expenses, which we currently have requested 4,400. Which is actually slightly.
What number is it?
122.
22. Select board expenses, 4,400.
So I was of the understanding that the money had, from that account had not been being spent, but I, I'm not certain of that at the moment. So I would need to relook at that. So I don't have any additional, I don't have any requests for this evening on that area.
Oh, oh, you were going to request something about it, but.
I was going to request a reduction in.
So, so, so part of the use of select board expenses, by, by the way, is if we, you know, sometimes if, if we want to pay for something that is just not an item or that another department can't do, you know, well, the select board will, will have to pay for it out of that. So that, I'd be surprised if that account didn't get very, get used up considerably during, during the year. Is there anything else, though, that?
That's all I have for that.
Okay. So let's, let's approve minutes 3, 9, 22. There were two sets of minutes. Oh, this one was finance committee and one was the select board. So you want to start with the finance committee one? I'm in red and you're purple, which makes it, okay. Okay, so it looks like you added John's present with Steve and Justin. Okay. Okay. Number two, we go to that operations, number two. The purple, that's new, about Mickey Phil said employees should start a lower rate. You added that. Number four, town clear budget, or favor revised budget, affecting some increased costs or expenses in elections, local funding, okay, he just made it clearer, it's fine. And tree warden, we both had a comment there. The town board's empty warden should, he's the one who requested this department. However, it's going to discuss the issue with the director of operations. Oh, okay, that was kind of clear that it's, they're tailed into each other. All right. And then you added the draft. All right, this is our move that we accept the joint meeting of the select board and finance committee meeting, minutes of 3, 9, 22. Second, I vote yes.
Yes.
I'm going to remind yours.
Oh, sure.
Sir.
I'm sorry. I just looked at some of the texts that came in. Richard Jaffe texted me. He said he's on the Zoom but doesn't see a way to raise his hand and wanted to make a comment. I don't know, Richard, you still want to make that comment, but could we give him a moment?
Well, can, can, can you hear me? Yeah, I, I have nothing at the moment, but I didn't want to just jump in and interrupt. Is there, is there some sort of a branch? I see raise hands, supposed to be on GoTo, but I don't see it. Not that I want to disturb your meeting, but can anybody give me a little guidance on that?
And raise your hand physically?
Yeah, that's the way.
Yeah, that, that's the way. Like that? Doesn't seem like.
But are you having a discussion about the possibility of raising your hand or do you actually have a comment?
No, I'm just, I, I know I will have a comment later. I was just trying to, uh, figure out how to do this, so. But, uh, don't let me interrupt, keep going.
All right, well, or he'll text you and.
Yeah, he texted me, Richard.
Now you're stuck, now you're stuck.
I don't raise your hand.
Yeah, you raised his hand for, okay, I'm sorry, um.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you, Ron.
Um, the, the minutes of three, nine, uh, twenty-two, this is select board. Um, I'm in red and you're purple. Um, Steve asked how many? Oh, yes, uh, I didn't have the exact amount there. Melissa, Melissa stated that she had how many pending?
It just said twenty plus.
You had twenty, okay, twenty plus, okay. Cause I, I wrote twenty-one, but it's twenty plus, okay. Um, uh, just to say that the state supervisor, Delta Authority, these questions, but Melissa should see compassion, state supervisor. Justin argued that town council to go ice. Sorry, done the field process. Most likely to get an opinion for state records. Oh, that's fine. Advice, uh, budget review, we both had things, uh, the board discussed the response from Lake Garfield. Worked with a purchase twenty thousand dollar increase or total of fifty thousand dollars. I'm glad you asked, you added that, Justin. Uh, mitigation efforts from Lake Garfield, Steve tends to lean towards the original thirty K. And he thinks, oh, okay.
So just all remove, or you can remove, as he thinks.
Oh, yeah, so I'll, I'll keep your, as he thinks, I'll get rid of Steve stated that, as he thinks. I'm gonna cross this out. Um, as he thinks the war on milk will, which is what I, I put that in, is not gonna be won by increasing the funds since it will always be a series of small battles. Okay, Justin thinks that it's important to remember, town has historically existed the most cost, um, and general effective way to manage the milk. Uh, so, oh, or sorry, you put it in parentheses, that's okay. Report states that he's, what we're doing has not been cost-effective. I don't know if it's not been a cost-effective, it just hasn't been currently effective.
Well, and I've, it, when I read the reports from the lake scientists, it seems to be conflicting where he says things are going along as planned, we're removing milfoil and then last fall, he said, you know, we removed so much milfoil, but the efforts, you know, the milfoils outpacing the dash, which is.
Okay, so Justin feels that giving thirty thousand dollars might be a waste. I'm assuming a waste of funds.
If it prevents new treatment methods like the can of harvest and invented batteries.
Fine, okay, that's fine. Um, number six, uh, just felt the complaint was similar to early months filed and the sense that the claim that were too vague or he thought it was worth reconsidering the minutes and adding detail. Okay, fine. Uh, number seven, uh, B, Justin thinks as long as, okay, it's fine, but there's no record. B, Justin, uh, in order to review competition. Steve. So, okay, wait a minute. So I didn't say I hope, I said that they would be able to address. Next, that, Steve believes, okay, I have that. Believes that future, uh, trust these, these future, these non-committed. Um, okay, so I took out, I did, I, I made it more succinct. Um, two well-meaning people for that dollar of wages for the transfer station attendance on the community board. Um, uh, cause I'm out of control. Steve also said a commission. Will be working against, okay, this is another discussion of the human resource. Whose job, look, you and I had the same change. So who, whose job would we work, so can you keep mine in there?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna cross that out there. Include, may I pay for employees? Matter given, take them up to advertise committee. Uh, motion was made to appoint a slav shop, uh, committee consisting, consisting of five people. Volume mission, oh, obviously put the mission in there. It was only one, it was only one motion?
Cause, yeah. Okay, I mean, it was all included. I think it was just accidental double.
Great. Uh, fine, number eleven, binary discussion, what, 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 Justin did not have any, like, what, Steve, he thinks he had many, what said she is working on a draft. Twelve, discuss season to SIS letter. Um, see luckily with fifty cents, yes, for a this media completion. Next week, fifth annual, okay, fine. And we're adding the investigator's letter, which is fine, that's not, not a. So I make a motion, oh, wait, you didn't have, um, made, yeah.
Paper, paper, paper. Make a motion to approve nine email, uh, minutes as amended.
Of the, of the select board.
Of the select board.
Okay, I second that motion. I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Two to zero, okay. Um, true, possible amendment to to.
Three, twenty-three, twenty-two. So, um, Gary Shaw had written to this cycle and talked, said that he thought the minutes were incomplete. So when someone does that, I went back and listened to the audio and all the video. I don't know why it has all these formatting things.
Yeah.
That's nothing. It, the only changes I made are on item number four.
Um, which is which is this item number four or this item?
Right here.
This item, yeah.
Those are, that's the only subject. Basically, I don't know that I deleted much at all. I just rewrote the whole conversation as best I could, summarizing a few things.
That's, that's fine. That's the only thing you made? No, made it, what about all the things, oh.
It's all, like I said, someone said the minutes weren't, uh, accurate. So I, I basically, not, not a transcript, but tried to include as much detail as possible.
Well, mission accomplished because there's a lot of, this person says this, this person said that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not, they understand that, that it's, that's entirely necessary, but.
Well, I just didn't want any accusations of you included this and not that, and I just wanted it all to be there.
Well, listen, you know what? Um, you're gonna be sitting on the board for a while, um, you do the best you can. Um, not everybody's gonna be a hundred percent happy. So, um, we, we can't do a transcript because nobody, we've read, we've the minutes, uh, and the idea is to try. Okay. It's, it's fine. I, 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 I approve, uh, Justin's additions to the minutes of two, uh, twenty-three, twenty-two, second. Uh, I go, yes, yes. Uh, you wanna initial it? I'm sorry to ask, something, could I, could I go into the bathroom?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Would anybody like a cookie?
The real sweet cookies.
We did not use any ARPA funds today for them.
Is it not?
Yep. Even though, I think.
My question is.
Melissa? I, I see, Steve, uh, you have the meeting paused for a moment?
Yeah, the meeting is paused.
Yeah, I just, uh, so if I wanna ask a question, I see no raised hands, so I would just kinda, I don't wanna interrupt everybody. I don't have a question at the moment, but I probably will later. So I would just shout out, is that it?
Your camera's off right now. Yeah, Richard, so you can just raise your hand.
Yeah, just put your hand up.
Um, where do you, where's, here, can you see it? Or you can make some noise, too. All right, okay, um, so can you see my hand?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll, I'll catch you later. Thank you. I'm gonna mute for a moment, all right?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I was paralyzed.
Um. Okay, okay. Um.
Number five.
Number five, uh, draft response to other meeting law complaint filed by John Wiegand did, uh, March fourth, twenty-two. So I took the time to read, uh, Mr. Wiegand's latest of a meeting law complaint and read the documents in which, um, in which the issue is, and, um, I have written the following response. Uh, here, Mr. Wiegand, uh, there was no executive session on two, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two. This complaint seems to be about the minutes of an executive session that occurred on two, two, twenty, twenty-two. Uh, the meeting was to discuss the status of an ongoing investigation with an investigator hired to do just that. As the names of those town employees being investigated could be and were mentioned, uh, an executive session was called. This was advised by our town legal counsel. The meeting took place without Mr. Wiegand's attendance because he was one of, it was one of several meetings that he has chosen not to attend. In first parentheses, Monterey operates remote meetings and therefore is accessible from most vacation locations. No changes were made to the format or method that the minutes, that the minutes have been drafted. Select board members who attended, uh, parentheses, Stephen Weiss and Dustin Maycock, in parentheses, were given ample time to review the minutes, listen to the recordings and make changes. Mr. Wiegand's assertion that they did not, or that they were both manipulated in some fashion, is spurious at best and denotes inherent bias against individuals that Mr. Wiegand doesn't like personally. Uh, select board members who attended, parentheses, Stephen Weiss and Dustin Maycock, in parentheses, both made revisions to the minutes based upon their review of the recording and understanding of the salient points of the meeting. Mr. Wiegand's assertion that, quote, the chair likely approval, the chair likely approval of inaccurate minutes was intentional, Mr. Maycock's approval was likely unintentional, end quotes, further reflects distinct bias and disconnection with reality since Mr. Wiegand is making a claim that would require some sort of thoroughance. In parentheses, how could you claim to know whether the acts of an individual are, quote, intentional or, quote, non-intentional? Um, in a further review of this claim, the missing discussions that Mr. Wiegand includes in the complaint and, um, and wants published seem to mostly contain Mr. Wiegand's own personal grievances and statements against several individuals in town. A cynical reading of such might suggest that this open meeting law complaint itself is being used to publicly publicize the personal feelings of Mr. Wiegand since the complaint becomes public record. Hopefully this is not the case, since that would go against the instructions of town legal counsel who have instructed us to sequester all executive session minutes related to the current ongoing investigation. It may also violate the OML statute itself since it attempts to circumvent the executive session. Regardless of these accusations, the Monterey Select Board is committed to the transparency of governmental proceedings. The current ongoing investigation has, has never occurred in Monterey and has been a challenge to meet the demands and, and has been a challenge to meet these demands and atmosphere of avarice and the needs of some to sensationalize these sensitive proceedings. In closing, it should be noted that Mr. Wiegand has demanded mediation in his filings. This is certainly a good idea, however, since Mr. Wiegand has chosen to be absent for approximately one-third of all select board meetings, I, I'd like to add, including this one. Um, maybe I can't. Might we suggest that he begin attending select board meetings with some regularity first? Uh, you know, uh, so that's basically it, Justin. We're basically accused, you're, you're basically being accused of being manipulated and yet unintentionally manipulated.
So, a- and your point that I approved, the minutes is absolutely correct. I think, save for the one meeting that I was not at, which specifically dealt with issues that I was going to recuse myself from. I think I voted yes on every single set of minutes that this select board has ever approved. Uh, which is true. I have approved all the minutes that I have approved, that the slide board has approved.
Nobody came to your house and, and knocked on your door and said, you better approve it or not? Nobody put a horse head in your bed?
No, and, but, and, but sometimes, like, for instance, it was October sixth minutes, there was open meeting law complaint and they weren't, uh, specific enough, which I said fair enough, and so I went back and added, uh, added, uh, detail to them. And so I, I do make mistakes. This in particular, I, I mean, the same thing that we did, uh, for just earlier this meeting. You know, if someone says the minutes aren't specific enough or they're too vague, then I go back and I add, add clarity. And I think that's fair enough, and I did review the two, two, twenty-two minutes. Um, I think, um, who was it? Uh, you know, if, 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 if there's a disagreement on what's in the minutes, you can more or less write a transcript and then there's no disagreement, cause that is what happened.
Or, or what you could do is, since this occurred between members of the select board, you can, you can, you can come to select board and say, hey, guys, can we have a discussion about those minutes that, that came out? Can I, can I make a few suggestions for some changes? You know, we actually do have the ability to talk to each other in a public session or if it's an executive session, but we don't, but instead, instead, you have one select board member, John Wiegand, who decided, no, I'm not going to have a discussion about it. Instead, I'm gonna send an open meeting law complaint, um, and use, use, uh, this, part of the discussion that took place in executive session in the complaint. This, and this, this is, uh, you know, this, I don't know, I don't know how this works out because, because, you know, I thought the whole idea of the executive session is, you know, this, you're, you're discussing this things privately. And I, and, and, and I'm telling you, and Justin, uh, I, I personally, personally, I personally don't care how how anybody feels about it, but when somebody writes a sentence in an open meal and complaints, it says the chair, myself intentionally, um, uh, uh, approved something in- inaccurately and yet the other person that, that, and then you, but you, you signed it and it was unintentional. Uh, I mean, that's, that's kinda. I mean, that's, that's gotta be the, that's gotta be the craziest thing in the world. I mean, you know, I mean, you're either, it was either, you know, if you disagree with something, you disagree with something, but to actually make an accusation that, for some reason, I would intentionally approve something and I know that was wrong, and then somehow being able to hypnotize you into doing the same is preposterous.
No, and I think, you know, you can't speak to people's intentions, but I can say that, you know, sometimes I have approved minutes, like October 6th, that, you know, I, I voted yes, and I approved them, and then in hindsight, someone said they weren't specific enough, and I, so I went back and I changed them, and I'm happy to do the same here to avoid controversy. And I also know that we have next, until next week to respond to this.
Well, listen, so I, I'm.
So should we, should we come back to it next week?
No, I'm, look, I'm, I'm sorry, and maybe, maybe I am, I apologize if I do sound like I'm trying to do something over here. At some point, someone's, some points, you know, yeah, I mean, if somebody, if somebody's gonna make something, an absurd statement, then I believe it's, it's in town's best interest that we, that we, that we push back. And, and if he wants to continue making absurd statements, he can certainly go ahead and do it. But I think, again, instead of complaining about meetings that he's not attending, he should attend the meetings. And therefore, be able to be part of the discussion instead of waiting until the end and whatever, so that's.
No, I agree, and since we do have another week, I may, I don't, I guess we have to choose a response, but.
Well, I would.
Because I, I would, I just didn't get a chance to draft my own response, I guess, but.
Well.
And like I said, I, what, because I feel, you know, it's kind of a discretionary thing as to whether minutes are too vague, or like, the ones that I've changed are, are far too specific. But I'd rather have them be too specific than too vague, I guess, you know?
But.
But.
But that's not the point of this open meeting law complaint. He's, he's saying, you know, the way I read it, is he's saying that somehow, or at least that somehow some people in the select board are intentionally being vague or intentionally misleading the public by, by approving minutes. Now, you, you reviewed the minutes, too, so, you know, so.
Like I said, I think I've approved every set of minutes that we've approved, only maybe one. So, so my, you know, my initials are on all of them, and sometimes someone says, you lucked this out, or you missed that, as happens, and I go back and I, and I, and I.
I make.
I don't, I, I, I'm very accurate to what happened, you know?
I know, but, but that's all. That's my point of view. Anyway, so, you don't have to sign it, I'm gonna send this to, I.
So you're ready to.
I'm making, I'm gonna send it with the, with the, with the amount of signatures that are currently on it.
Well, if any, if anything, well, I did make, well, suggested changes, but we didn't go into executive session because.
The thing is, I would read out the things that he's proposing to put in there, and, and without getting specifics, because it was an executive session, nearly all of them are his point of view about certain individuals, and so it's not what minutes are for.
Well, so, and so what I, what I do, without going into specifics, and what I do if there's a question about minutes, is I just write almost a transcript, so that there's no questions, it's just, you know, exactly what happened, not. There's not, there can be no room for action.
I, I would be very surprised if there's an, there's a, there's an amount of answer that would please somebody who doesn't feel that it's necessary to actually show up at meetings. Obviously, this is somebody who's, who's charting their own path, and, you know. If I didn't show up at a meeting, I wouldn't, I wouldn't show up, I wouldn't listen to a tape later and say, you know what, you guys were all wrong, and, you know, and you did this, and you did that. I would, I would be embarrassed to do that, because that is, that is, that's ridiculous, that's ridiculous thing. But, all right, listen, so, so I'd be pushing to send it to him with the current signature that's, that's there. Third, second, can you vote yes?
Yes.
Let's go on to number six, Something Happy, the announcement of the Memorial Day Parade. Since you're on the committee, Justin?
Yeah, so the Memorial Day Parade this year is happening, I believe it's the usual time of starting at St. Hill Road, Route 23, at 1:00 P.M. If anyone is interested in helping out, or wants to march, has a group that wants to march in it, you can reach out to the parade committee, Eileen Marcus, Tom Sawyer, or myself. And it's the 175th anniversary of Monterey, so that's all I have to say for that.
And I've seen this being well publicized in Monterey News. Are there other locate, are there other venues that you're using to advertise it? Would you let people know?
Select board meetings, well, select board meetings, but, you know, I, yeah, I don't know. You know, it's the usual thing, but it's been a few years since we've done it, so it's good. And I also believe that the morning service at the Veterans Memorial will be occurring, if you understand.
Okay, terrific. Okay, so, number seven, which I believe is why everybody is here. So, not to, not to dampen everybody's enthusiasm over here, but I have, I've consulted with counsel, and because I have, I live in the Lake District, and the, the Lake District will have a direct financial impact upon, upon me, and therefore, I am, I've been advised to recuse myself from a discussion or voting for this particular item. So, if you want to have the discussion, certainly may go ahead, but.
Sorry, can, I guess I was discussing myself, but. Well, similarly, I was concerned, you know, that it may, it may be a question of ethics. I talked to the state office, and I can only, of course, talk about my own personal situation, but I learned that it, given that it's a matter of general policy affecting a substantial portion of the town, despite the fact that I have direct family members who would be part of the tax district, I would, I can participate on it, because it is general policy affecting a substantial portion of the town. So that's kind of a exemption.
And the same thing applies to you, Steve. Same exact thing applies to you. I went through this with the, with the board when, when the complaint was made to the Ethics Committee by John, that I couldn't be involved in, in the broadband, getting broadband for Bear Town Mountain Road. And he filed a complaint, and it was ruled on, and I pointed out to them that there were 20 or 20 or 25 houses on Bear Town Mountain Road, and they, they said there was absolutely no merit. So your position that you can't vote on is, I think, is absolutely correct, and you ought to double check with the state if you have any doubt about it.
Well, and in particular, I made the argument to the state, which they didn't buy. I said it affects everyone in town, because you're either paying more for the lake, or you're paying less for the lake. They didn't really buy that, but they did say, because it is general policy affecting a substantial portion of the town, that I was cleared, or, that's my understanding from the advice that I received. The Lake Garfield Working Group made a motion last evening, which we referenced earlier, but the Lake Garfield Working Group recommends select board consider putting the formation creation of a lake tax district on the town warrant for purposes of long-term sustainable funding source to maintain lake health. And based on, you know, these conclusions of the Lake Garfield Working Group and my own thoughts, I do think that the tax district would be the most sustainable way to ensure lake health going forward. It's not, I think it can be perceived as saying only people on the lake should pay for protecting lake health, which is not really, which is not where I'm coming from with supporting the tax district, because I just don't think that there's a perfect way to tax. And we all pay for roads that we don't drive on, we pay for parks that we don't use. And it's not to say that anyone in town would, can't benefit from going to the beach or putting a kayak in the lake, or even just looking at the lake, it's beautiful. But it's to say that, to the extent that we keep putting it on the warrant as a special article, sometimes that is citizen petition, sometimes not, always, or almost always with finance committee disapproval, sometimes with select board disapproval, it seems like a precarious way to take care of Lake Garfield, which is a good resource for the town. And it seems to me that a lake tax district would be a more just, long-term solution for conserving the lake. I think, you know, also, some people who are in the Lake Buell Tax District, or anyone who's in the Lake Buell Tax District and lives in Monterey, pays for both Lake Buell and Lake Garfield, which doesn't seem fair. There's no, there's no perfect way to do it completely fairly for everyone involved. Like I said, I completely see the viewpoint that someone says, people who aren't within the tax district still benefit from the lake, and some people who aren't in the tax district benefit a lot from the lake. And that's absolutely true, but I think it's a, it's a long-term solution. Like the Lake Garfield Working Group said, it's, it's a sustainable, long-term solution for lake health. And our current situation seems rather precarious. That's just my point of view. So I would support the formation of a lake tax district myself.
I oppose the formation of a lake tax district, because I think that the proper way to finance the mitigation of milk oil is through the town. I think the town should put a line item in its budget. I think that would be a much more fair way of doing it, but if a lake, lake tax district is imposed on the Lake District, I think then that other ways to, to equalize the, the use of the lake might be to charge for beach parking permits. Charge $100 for a beach parking permit for the season. Charge $150 for a truck parking permit with a trailer to launch your boat. We can't charge for the use of the boat ramp, but we can charge for parking your truck and your trailer there. And this way, people, and charge for people who want to, who want to keep their, their kayaks in the kayak rack.
We do.
We do, and all those revenues then should go to the tax district, so that everybody else in the town can help pay for the maintenance who directly use it. But I think everybody in the town benefits from having a lake there. Everybody's real estate values in the town of Monterey are higher than the surrounding towns because we have those lakes. And everybody's taxes in Monterey outside of the Lake District are lower because we have so many seasonal homeowners who are contributing to the town. So to put an additional burden on them just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
And like I said, you know, my idea behind a lake tax district, or the merits that I see in it are not saying only people who live on the lake should pay for the lake. It, it's not that, and frankly, I hadn't heard the idea of putting it online, as a line item on the budget until today, for whatever reason, as much as I've discussed the issue, I hadn't heard that.
Maybe we should do both. Maybe we should have a smaller line item on the, on the bud, on the budget that goes, that funds the Lake District as well. Maybe there's, maybe there's a way of doing, maybe instead of $50,000 a line item, we put a $25,000 line item, and then have a tax district, and then collect fees for, for use of the beach and the boat ramp and the kayaks that also contributes to the Lake District. And then, the Lake District isn't 100% paying for the, for the mitigation of milk oil.
And, and like I said, I don't think there's any perfect way to tax it, you know? It's not like we're gonna charge a quarter every time someone uses, you know, puts a boat or swims in the lake. Neither way is perfect, it's, but, you know, the, the fact is, everyone can use the lake in town, through the beach or through the boat ramp. The other fact is that people who live on the lake can use it just that much more easily. Neither way is perfect, and I'll agree with that. This, to me, seems like, the main merit I see behind it is some sustainability and more of a, a, a understanding of year after year, where's the funding from.
Steve Aronson's got his hand up. Yes, Steve?
Great. Hello, folks, thank you for recognizing me. Justin, I think you said it very, very well. This is the Towns Lake, and while this proposal will present a financial cost to those with lakefront property, it, I believe, may provide an opportunity to more fairly distribute the burden to take care of our lake. Taking care of our lake isn't a project-by-project scenario as we've been dealing with it. The, the long-term care of the lake requires much more planning and much more in-depth work than has been done so far. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Am I coming through okay? Perfect, great, thank you. And it's just feedback on my end, I apologize. I also respectfully disagree with, with my good friend and neighbor Ron Rothschild. I, I do think that the, the district makes sense, but I also don't think it precludes the town, who is a property owner along the beach. I'm guessing that the town is probably exempt from paying certain taxes, but would, would recommend that as part of discussions, that the town continue to commit some type of funding to the ma, maintenance of, of this great asset in town, which certainly, based on the, the different taxes that I see charged, real estate taxes to those of us who live on the lake or own, own property on the lake, the town does benefit in its tax base and tax collection to support all of the other roads and all the other functions that the town needs to carry on. I, I also would point out that for those who are concerned, and I've heard the discussion, that, that tax burdens to those who live on the lake will increase and potentially out of control, I, I point out that every, everyone who lives on the lake or owns property that would become part of the tax district, they'll have a say in the tax district's operation and its taxing. So this, this doesn't necessarily create an unfair burden. Certainly, it's not taxation without representation. It, in fact, promotes representation to a smaller group who will probably have a louder voice than they might in the overall town. And I also point out that if there is no major project in a particular year, the tax levy may be zero. So it doesn't guarantee that folks will be taxed every year unless there are expenses. So, thank you for listening.
Anybody else?
Can you hear me? Hello? Hi, yeah, Richard Jaffe here. I actually think Steve Aronson stole my, all the thing I was gonna say. I have to agree with him 100%, and I also agree with Justin. It's a more stable, sustainable source of funds. You know, I am, I am not a member of the Lake Garfield Working Group, but I attend all their meetings. I'm also involved in the Friends of Lake Garfield, and it is just a constant, ongoing discussion every single year, year after year, trying to figure out how we're gonna get money to, to, to take care of the lake, its health, and its welfare. And the tax district, first of all, I think you should allow the tax district at least to get onto the warrant to see if we can at least get it started, because it does, it has to go through quite a process. It could take a couple of years to get this done. And ultimately, the decision to have it or not is up to the people who live around the lake. And I believe, my last experience with this, it's gonna take, I think, two-thirds, possibly even three-quarters of the residents around Lake Garfield, when it finally does come to a vote, to approve it. Let them, let them, let them have their say. Let them have their voice. Let, let them have their voice. Then that's what I have to say. Thank you for listening.
I'm concerned about one aspect of this. In general terms, I like the idea of a tax district. This, uh, proposal is different in an important respect from what was adopted in Lake Buell. Lake Buell made no mention, expressed mention whatsoever of the use of chemicals or biological agents. Although implicitly it could be used, but they made no mention of it. This one specifically mentions the use, and it mentions it in positive terms. And an ordinary person reading it would get the sense from it that the select board or the members who were in favor of it were in favor of using those agents. The town meeting, when this was last discussed a few years ago, was overwhelming in voting that it did not want those kinds of agents used on the lake. So I sent around, I don't know if you got a chance to read it, because I sent it late this afternoon. But my proposal is to change section 3A. So that after the phrase flora and fauna, you delete the remainder of what's written. And instead state, except that application of chemical or biological weed controls may only be used if first approved by the appropriate state and federal agencies, by the proprietors at their annual meeting, and then by the annual town meeting. And further provided that if this subsection is declared illegal by a state agency or court, this preservation district shall be dissolved and its remaining funds after payment of outstanding debts shall be returned to the proprietors. And at that point, this act, the state act shall cease to be operative. If you adopt the district or propose it as written, it would mean that there are approximately 180 to 200 homeowners. Most of them, by the way, not, uh, registered voters in the town. They would elect a board of seven people. And four of those people on their own would be able to make the decision for the entire town to use biological and chemical agents. I don't think that's right. And I think that if those kinds of things are ever going to be considered, it ought to be approved both by the proprietors of the district and by the town meeting. So I hope if you go forward with this, that you consider that amendment.
And I can certainly see why it would raise concern and why this or, or adding something like this would be a way to get, uh, get people behind it who are concerned that it means, means herbicides. But I think, you know, it is also important to note that there's nothing preventing. You say four people could decide to use herbicides. Right now, one person could, if they wanted to, use herbicides on the lake, if they got the, the permitting by the state. The town can't prevent, to my understanding, the use of herbicides on the lake.
Generally?
That's my understanding. I could, I could be mistaken. I don't fully understand the laws, but it's, I believe that the town at one point tried to ban herbicides, uh, in the lake. I could be wrong. I'm not too familiar. Uh, but, uh, uh, I mean, I, I would look into something like this if it made people feel more comfortable with the idea of the tax district. Cause I think the tax, tax district in my mind really goes beyond any particular application or project. It's really a long-term.
Hello?
You have a comment?
Yes, I do. Um, I, I would be opposed to any kind of language in developing a tax district that would restrict any kind of methodology to take care of Lake Garfield that's approved by the state of Massachusetts, by the Department of Environmental Protection, National Heritage. If all those agencies, um, uh, would approve a particular method, and I'm not talking about herbicides, it could be cosmic rays from Mars for all I know, uh, that should not be precluded from what a tax, uh, what the, what the tax district could do or could not do. That's my comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve, uh.
Yeah, I, I would, I would echo what Richard just said. I think micromanaging what, um, a separately created board can and cannot do, um, without the foresight to know what might be happening in two, five, 10, 20, or 30 years is very short-sighted. Um, I think the members of the duly elected board, um, which certainly will stand for election on a regular basis, um, would not have quite the free rein that I, I think I heard, um, suggested in, in the comments. So I, I think the, the appropriate thing to do is to move forward with the discussions to apply to the state for their approvals or, or non-approval. Um, and then let the way the tax districts work across the state, I don't know about across the country, but the little bit of research that I did, tax districts work well. Um, they are, um, carefully maintained and run by the, the citizens, the residents who are elected. Uh, and I think micromanaging it on one particular point, um, is very, very short-sighted.
So I think you need John here to vote whether it's going to go on the warrant. And since next week is the deadline to get citizens petitioned, and I would actually state that Garfield Working Group should submit a warrant in case John doesn't show up.
That is, brings up a broader point, which is that one of the reasons that I sought select board approval of the tax district was that I thought it would be a way to uh, utilize town council to review it and, and bring up uh, questions about what could or could not be included, because frankly, we don't even know if a provision like that would be legal yet. And I know there's a provision in the provision for if it's not legal, but maybe town can, council can answer those types of questions. But to the extent that it's not going to get select board approval, I'm not going to bring it to, I'm not going to utilize town council for something that doesn't have select board backing. It's just my own personal item at this point. Um.
Well, you can't do it now because Steve is still recusing himself and John Weingold, who wanted you to introduce this, is not pending the meeting, so.
I know. It's just, well, that's what I'm saying, but it's a personal item at this point. It's not a select board agenda item. So, um, that's, I, that's all I have for that issue. Do we have any mail or correspondence?
Nope.
Nope.
I, I don't think I quite understand what just happened. Uh, uh, are we, there is not going to be any discussion about putting the tax district on the warrant, or it's going to be a citizen's petition from the Lake Garfield Work Group? Could you just clear that up for me?
Uh, I.
I can't hear that.
You can't hear, can you hear me, Steve?
Well, I can hear you, but whoever was just speaking, I didn't hear what they said.
You're, you're back on. Apparently your mic, last speaker's microphone was not working.
Okay. So I, uh, Justin Makeup would like to put the Lake Garfield Tax District on the town meeting warrant, especially because it would, I would be reviewed by town.
It's breaking up.
But there's, uh, I'm the only select board member who is present and not recusing himself for ethics reasons on this issue, and I can't act alone. I can, you know, you, we need to act as a.
So you, Justin, you're not, we're not hearing you.
So Justin can't add it alone because Steve is recusing himself and John Weingold is not here. So in order for it to get on the town meeting warrant, it would have to come by citizen petition. Did you hear that, Richard?
Yep, I got that. That's the answer that I was looking for. I don't like the answer, but, uh, you know, here we have a town of, uh, how many people and how, and a budget of one size. We've got one person that's, that's the only one who could talk about this. It's, it just doesn't make sense. And I know John Weingold has been whatever John Weingold is, but Steve, I have, Steve Weiss, I, I agree with, uh, with Justin that you should be able to speak to this. I mean, it is of, of a general nature for the entire town, but you know, that's up to you, I suppose.
There, there are a lot of people out there that, that, that want to make, that want to file ethics violations and have been advised by council that, um, that, that this is, uh, this is an area that, um, would give somebody some, some ability to do that. So unfortunately, in this current atmosphere, a lot of people out there that want to send.
I, I, Steve, I'm sorry, the last, the last paragraph got broken up.
He's making a speech. Don't worry about it.
He's taking the path of least resistance.
Who said that? Ron? It's very difficult, uh, virtually like this, but, uh, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Where's the, the other one?
Oh, well, second.
I don't know. You can't discuss an adjournment.
I was just wondering if we're.
We discussed at the beginning of the meeting, not going into executive session to approve executive session minutes.
So I'd be happy to go in and have it just into executive session to briefly go.
Melissa, can you help me out here? I don't hear what they're saying.
All, all of the voices are, um, who are in attendance at the meeting, your voices are breaking up badly.
Let's adjourn.
You're gonna have.
Okay, then let's adjourn. Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn. Yes. For adjourn.